That's all I can tell you. I know June did tell me something. When she took it to the mayor. That's all I know. That's all I'm doing.
Meeting is called to order. First item is invocation by Reverend Pamela Schmalling, Anglican Church of the Holy Spirit.
Let us pray. Lord God, we thank you for our town of Prescott Valley and for all the people who work to make it a friendly and a safe place in which to live. We ask your continued blessings upon our mayor, council members, city officials, police officers, and all first responders as they go about their work. We also ask your continued blessing on the people who live in this wonderful community. May all that is said and done by our mayor and council be pleasing to you, O Lord. We pray this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Schmalling. Next will be at a pledge of allegiance, Emma Student of the Month will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Emma. Third, a fourth item, roll call Diane.
Mayor Scoog.
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Maury.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Nye.
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum mayor.
Thank you Diane. Next item is scheduled announcements and presentations. Student of the Month, Emma Williams. Mike, you're up.
Good evening. It's nice to see everybody here. This is one of our favorite weeks of the month because it's the fourth week of the month and that's when we honor a student of the month. And tonight we have Emma Williams here. We're going to honor her. And we do this each month as I said, as part of a collaboration between the Prescott Valley Rotary Club Bradshaw Mountain High School and the town of Prescott Valley. And we honor outstanding students like Emma who excel in the community in different ways, primarily involvement in activities, school activities, academics, and leadership skills. And she's been identified by both staff and administration as one of those students who have really risen to the top. And that's why we're here tonight to honor her. We feel that she demonstrates, just like all of our students of the month, the values that are part of the Rotary Club of Prescott Valley. And the town of Prescott Valley is honored to recognize youth such as Emma that engage in the community and engage in school. And we're hoping that as she follows her path through her education, she'll be back in our community to become a leader as well. Some of the things I've been given as far as her background, I'd be happy to go over some of those. And then Court Minor, the principal, will take over and give you a little more information that I've left out as far as blanks. But as reading some of the information in her background, it was apparent that being part of Bradshaw Mountain High School has enriched her life and the academic success at the high school. These are part of her words, not mine. So she feels as though going to Bradshaw Mountain High School has been something that has enriched her life. She explained also that Bradshaw Mountain High School, the family, has contributed to her experience through her involvement in both academics and sports. And as you'll hear from me and by Court Minor, that she's been active in both as well as in the community. She does participate in school-based organizations that we've heard about before, the National Honor Society where she's the treasurer, Link Student Council as vice president, and HOSA. Her interests in sports is focused primarily in volleyball from her, I guess, beginning at Bradshaw Mountain High School where she is, I think now, the captain. And she participates in track and field and lettered in both when she was a sophomore. So she's gone a long way as a sophomore and now as a senior. So she's progressed exponentially. She has taken advanced placement courses to prepare herself for college, including honor courses in anatomy and zoology and math. And this has led her to a decision to pursue biology at Arizona State University. And being a graduate of the University of Arizona, hopefully she perused all the opportunities as far as universities. Since ASU is a little closer, I assume that's why she chose that. Emma admits that her exposure to a set of unique opportunities that she's gained at Bradshaw Mountain High School has brought her closer to her school and engage in campus and community activities, and that's why we're honoring her tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Court Minor and he's going to give us a little more detail about Emma.
Thank you Michael. Mayor Scoog, councilmembers, distinguished guests. My name is Court Minor. I'm the proud principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School. As Mike stated there, Emma was nominated by our staff. This isn't an administrative thing. It would have been easy if it was an administrative thing, but she's recognized by the staff members at our school who nominate our student of the month. Mike touched on a few things, but I just want to reiterate a few. She's a very well-rounded student, being involved with the service clubs on our campus to our AP courses and honors courses, as well as her involvement in sports with volleyball and track. But what impresses me most with Emma is her maturity and how she makes everyone around her better. If we had a tough class, all right, a tough, pre-calc, kind of some tough kids in there, I could just take Emma and stick her in there and she'd fix it. She'd make everyone around her better because she just holds herself with such great presence. She's going to finish up, we'll see how she finishes up this semester, but currently at seven semesters at Christmas, she was at a 4.477 GPA. So again, all her involvement on campus, the sports, the AP courses, and working 20 hours a week at a job, it's very impressive on how she manages her time. She'll probably find college really easy when she gets there. And she has been accepted to the Barrett Honors College at ASU, which is pretty darn impressive. But I'd like to introduce Emma Williams.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Rotary Club and the town of Prescott Valley. First and foremost, I would like to thank my parents. They have been my rock and they always have held me to a very high standard, which I think is part of why I strive to be really successful in everything that I do. I'd also like to thank the administration at Bradshaw Mountain High School, especially Mr. Minor. They have also been such a great support system for me. I know that I can go into the office and get all the help I need. I'm prepared for college and I'm prepared for everything else, I think. And I'd also like to thank the town of Prescott Valley for raising me. Communities are very important and so I hope one day that I'll be able to give back to this community. I hope I'll be able to come back and just kind of see what's going on. And I'd like to come back and live here and put my skills that I learned in college to use. So thank you very much.
Hey, we're going to write your name on that list of youth of the student of the month that's coming back to our community. So no, that's what we're hoping you're going to do. I think you get a great education and other benefits through Bradshaw Mountain High School and we expect you to come back. So it's a great expectation. So it is with sincere pleasure that we congratulate you as student of the month. And we do have a few things we'd like to give you to commemorate tonight. One is a certificate just indicates that you have been designated as the April Student of the Month. And it has the logo of all the entities involved with recognizing you, Rotary Club, town of Prescott Valley, and Bradshaw Mountain High School. So hopefully you'll display that in a prominent place at ASU. And we do have a paperweight. So this is just something to remind you as student of the month for Prescott Valley, Arizona. We hope you use that as well. And then we want to give you an opportunity to invite your parents up to see if they'd like to say a few words as well.
This is my mom Catherine Williams and my dad Robert Williams.
As you can imagine, we are very, very proud of Emma and everything that she has accomplished. We are very grateful for Bradshaw Mountain High School and the administration, Mr. Minor. We feel that they have helped her accomplish everything that she set out to do. And like Mr. Minor said, we have no doubt in our minds that she is ready for college and that she will be able to tackle anything that comes her way as far as college goes because of the preparation that she has received at Bradshaw Mountain High School. And we just want to thank Mr. Minor and the administration and the teachers and the community of Prescott Valley. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Williams?
Thank you.
Congratulations to you Emma and to your family. And we'll hope to see you soon as you return from ASU. Thanks again.
Congratulations Emma. Keep up the good work. Thank you Mike. Next item, Contractors Association Build Arizona Award.
Thank you Mayor Council. I'm going to bring quite a group up here tonight, but I'll do some introductions of them once I give a little introduction to what this next item is. But several of the project partnerships. What we're going to talk about tonight is this award that I had the pleasure of going down with Chris Graff, Asphalt Paving Supply, to the annual dinner of the Associated General Contractors where they award the Build AZ Awards for Arizona. It's quite a prestigious group. Some of the awards were in the company of some of the most successful projects built in Arizona last year. Most of them of the $100 million variety. Some examples that received this similar award was the slide up at Page. I think everyone's aware when slope fell away on 89 up near Page and that effort to restore that. Some of the big interchanges, the 303 new interchange down the valley, about $150 million project, projects on time and on budget and done very well. Well, those are big projects, but the small ones do add up too. Very specifically, council, you may recall the Enterprise Parkway project that we cut a ribbon on in May of 2015. This particular AGC award is a Build AZ Award for new construction project of the year for rural projects under $10 million. So the Enterprise Parkway project was recognized as one of the best projects under $10 million in Arizona. So I had the pleasure of attending a dinner with Chris Graff and being part of this award presentation. Just a little about the project for the benefit of everyone. Back in 2000, late 2013, the Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation turned in for a Arizona Commerce Authority grant. Lots of acronyms I could give out, but there's a full explanation. But we were awarded a $500,000 rural economic development grant in 2003 for actually building an access road for the Big Sky Industrial Park. A council may be aware the Big Sky Industrial Park is partially developed up near the top at Valley Road, but what this particular grant opportunity was, was to provide some connectivity to Highway 69 to continue some of the development of the Big Sky Industrial Park and also continue job growth in area. May be aware Superior Industries is up off that road and Lockheed Martin, some of those businesses. So very good roadway project and with the completion of this roadway project and signal on Highway 69 opens up better access and a lot more land use and actually shovel-ready developments up there that are ready for a user to come in and build on. So that's been some of the history. But a grant back in 2013, design was started in 2014 and actually the ribbon cutting ceremony was cut here. So what this project really was awarded for, not particularly roadway that was roughly a mile long in the signal, it was about the partnerships. In order to put a project together like this, first and foremost, the Fane Signature Group had already started a road down to the bottom. They put significant effort in donation of land and actual construction of a lot of the roadway to basically move in the dirt standard in order for the new design, just to basically put some pavement and base on the road. So Fane Signature Group was a very valued partner in this. So by way of introductions, talk about some of the great project partnerships. Jeff Wassowitz is here tonight representing the Fane Signature Group, the landowner, but one of the big partnerships that got the road initially built and put that in plus donation a right of way. Of course Gordon Bowers through the Townings Agreement, can't say enough about this designer. On time and on budget means excellent plans. Mike Perez with Prescott Valley Economic Development Foundation, he's representing them. They were the ones who actually got it, jump-started with the grant through Arizona Commerce Authority through their grant application. Very well written. Part of the whole there too is part of job growth. Our Economic Development Foundation does that. Alvin Stump, the Northwest District Engineer. Without Alvin, if you know, if you access ADOT's right of way, that involves plan approval through Arizona Department of Transportation. Alvin did everything he could to understand that when you get a grant, it has short timelines in order to deliver the grant. So it was really light speed to get ADOT to approve the grant. They do maintain the signal that was installed, so there was quite a bit of effort on Alvin's part to make sure we met ADOT standards so that when we had this expeditious timeline for the grant, that the signal could be opened on time and ADOT could take it over for maintenance. So very thankful for ADOT and Alvin's work getting the plans through. Of course Chris Graff at Asphalt Paving Supply, his, their group, local contractor, and they got started in basically January 15, built a project basically better than on time because they finished ahead of schedule and they had to do all the coordination. So that's what this project's about, is the project partners. The last one, and obviously you want to call attention to, I guess, the funding authority was the Arizona Commerce Authority, Keith Watkins, who was our contact with him. He did send a statement, he couldn't be here tonight, but his statement, I'd like to read it, is ACA is very proud of the Enterprise Parkway grant we provided and hold a project up to a standard bearer for what a successful economic grant project looks like. So there's the best words that not only did it as a grant funding, but they said it met their mission that they, you know, jumpstart projects for economic development and job growth. And they're very thankful that the partnership that they found at Prescott Valley to further their mission with Arizona Commerce Authority to bring jobs to rural areas and economic prosperity. So that was the project. Couple more slides. You see, I had the pleasure of going down a couple Fridays ago and you can see this award, that was where some of Asphalt Paving Supply's lead project superintendents, that's Scott Gahr and Bobby Hoyt. So we've done a lot of projects with them here in Prescott Valley, but this one of course won an award, as you see. And of course, there's a finished product of what the project was. And just to rehash, to design and build a project within 18 months and meet all the requirements, especially access on a highway with long lead times for signals, all these particular project partners, very much specialists in their group, all took somewhat of a risk to trust others. We have some longstanding working relationships, but part of that is trusting and really keeping an eye on what the goal was. That was to deliver this project and give up some of your turf at times and say, we all know what our jobs are and everyone did them very well. And each one of these particular representatives for the particular group, that's why this project was awarded this very prestigious award from the Associated General Contractors, who is, obviously they recognize good construction that's done well in addition to on time and on budget. With that Mayor, I'd like to, if any one of these project partners would like to make a statement, that's the background and this is the award that I know Chris said he'd like to make sure we presented to council and call attention to it.
Who's first? Chris, are you first?
Mayor and Council, I just want to thank the town of Prescott Valley, ADOT, Economic Development Foundation, Dava, Fane Signature Group. Just absolutely a fun job to build and great partners to build it with. Thank you all.
Okay, Mr. Stump?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, I think it's a well-deserving project. As Norm mentioned, great partnership and great project for the community.
Mr. Perez?
Good evening Mayor and Council. This is a true partnership project and PVDF was very happy to be a part of it and hope future endeavors, we continue forming part of such partnerships that bring economic development and jobs to our community.
Mr. Bauer?
Good evening Mayor and Council. As always, we're just thrilled to have the opportunity to work with you and all these fine folks to get something done. We just love to build things and we got it done. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Wassowitz?
Mr. Mayor Council, we all hear about public-private partnerships and we all try to make them work. This is one that actually occurred, not just theory. It was great to be a part of it and thank you for your support.
I think all we can say is we do appreciate the great work you did and congratulations.
You know Mayor, I was going to comment, I read the newspaper this morning that, you know, the NFL draft is going on and there's all that play about who you draft. If I was to do this project again and I had my draft picks one through six, this is who I draft. So very good group to draft. He's the number one picks.
Dream team is that?
Yeah, drafting the dream team here. Time for a picture guys. Mayor, anything further?
Great job Norm.
Guys, thank you for attending tonight.
And what a super job. We appreciate it.
Thank you Mayor, it was a pleasure doing the project.
Good job. Okay, next one is Proclamations, National Honor and Remember Month. And you have the, you can read the proc, Diane?
Yes Mayor. National Honor and Remember Month, May 2016. Whereas the freedom and security that citizens of the United States enjoy today are direct results of the bloodshed and continued diligence given by the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation. And whereas the sacrifices that such members of the United States Armed Forces and of the family members that support them have preserved the liberties that have enriched this nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas May is nationally proclaimed as Honor and Remember Month of Remembrance for all of our fallen military, all generations, all causes of death in service branches. And now therefore I Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2016 as a special time to show appreciation for our military and to proclaim it as Honor and Remember Month of Remembrance in the town of Prescott Valley and encourage all citizens to join me in showing our gratitude by the appropriate display of flags, ribbons, and participation in the display of the American flag and the Honor and Remember flag to be displayed for the month of May.
Thank you Diane. Vice Mayor coming?
Well, last year I was honored to be representing the town at the event that was held. And I sure hope we're having another event this year because I'm sure it'll be bigger and better as more people become aware of it. But I am looking forward to it and I'm glad you folks are here to take charge of that. So thank you.
Thank you Rick. Paulette?
Unluckily enough, I will not be here for this event. My son is being honored on the East Coast, so I will take my husband and I over to Charlotte, North Carolina, and then on to Quantico Marine Corps Base and Arlington, Virginia for Memorial Day weekend. But I am asking everybody here at this point to please support Jasmine and Jody and all the other Gold Star families that we plan on having at this event. Please come and support these people. These families have lost so much. The flag display will be 328 going up on May 21st and it will come down on May 31st. Come out and see our soldiers, okay? And thank you very much. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Paulette. Jasmine?
We would like to invite everyone to come on May 30th event at the Prescott Valley Center here at 2:00 PM. And we also have a 5K run at the Iron King Trail on the 28th of May. And at 10 o'clock, we would invite everyone to come and support us. Thank you very much.
Thank you sir. First I'd like to draw attention to the last photograph that was up, Councilman Grossman. Thanks for the shorts sir. I take a lot of heat. I'm not alone, thank you sir. As the ladies stated, reason we're here today, in our country's history, over 200 years, there's never been an official designated symbol that reminds us specifically of the service made by our members of our military and the lives lost in the service to our country. We are now trying to change that. For these selfless men and women who gave their lives for our country, we will be placing 328 flags in memory of these military men and women at the Civic Center on May 21st. It will be up till May 31st. Each flag with the name of a lost soldier, no matter the conflict. Please take a few minutes to come out and recognize Arizona's fallen heroes. So show of hands, how many veterans do we have in the room tonight? Quite a few. Thank you for your service and welcome home. But the reason we're here tonight, these two ladies are Gold Star Moms. Their sons paid the ultimate price and they're not here today. And that's what this is all about. The month of May is to take the time and honor and remember those who sacrificed so that we could be here. Just take a second and think about that. That's why we're here. Thank you sir.
I think this is very clear that freedom has not been free. It started with the Revolutionary War, went through, I don't know, America's been tested time and time again. And it has been at a great expense that we've time and time again, and it has been at a great expense that we've kept, defended our freedom, and our thanks go to those people that put on a uniform and do work to defend our freedom, and it's with great sorrow for those people that we have been lost in these challenges. Anything else, Vice Mayor? We want to thank you so much. Anything else? Thank you so much, and we do sympathize with you and appreciate you so much.
Okay, next proclamation is Fair Housing Month. Who's, anyone here to receive that pledge? Oh, there she is, good. Can you read that, Diane?
Yes, Mayor. Fair Housing Month, April 2016, whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibit discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing or land to be used for the construction of housing or in the provision of brokerage services on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familiar status, or national origin, and whereas the 1968 and 1988 Federal Fair Housing Acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing, and whereas April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Month in the United States, now therefore I, Mayor Harvey C. Scug of the town of Prescott Valley, do hereby proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in the town of Prescott Valley, and do hereby urge all residents of this community to comply with and show their support for the letter and the spirit of the Fair Housing Acts.
Thank you, Diane. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Well, I just wanted to say that it's an honor to represent the town with relation to Fair Housing Act and the way that the town respects and uses the Fair Housing Act to guide its policies relating to housing. The owner-occupied housing rehab program that I manage really honors this law, and I would, again, just like to say thank you, and I'm honored to be able to accept this proclamation.
Will you tell us about the rehab program?
Sure, Mayor. The town has a wonderful program that's grant-funded. We rehab housing for low-income citizens that own their homes and are unable to make needed repairs relating to health and safety. We help disabled people, senior citizens, families with small children to provide needed repairs, and I was really fortunate today to find out that we've received more funding from the state and the federal government to continue this program.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Well, I'm just grateful that we're able to recognize fair housing. I do, however, think it's kind of a shame that 50 years later, we're still having to acknowledge that. It seems to me it should be something that we've overcome already, and we shouldn't have to keep recognizing it each year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Air?
Yes?
Laura Lee, I'd like to share with everybody an experience I had this morning on this topic. I was due here this morning in this building for an 8:00 meeting, and when I drove up, there was a gentleman outside in the coal, clearly distraught. He walked up to me and asked me if I could help him, and when I listened to him, he needed this help. So, our administrative assistant, Leah Duke, and I, we spent some time with him, and before he was done, he was over to your department, came back, sought me out in this building to wave the paperwork at me, and with a big smile on his face, and even, you know, he was distraught when I began my conversation with me, but he was happy two hours later and tracked me down to say thank you. And that's the blessing of this program, we get to help people like that. And my issue and why I want to mention this, I know how heavily we advertise that this is available, but there's still many people in our community, like the gentleman this morning, that had never heard about the program, had no idea that we had anything here we could help him. So, I would like to propose that another arena where we advertise this is all the service organizations, if we don't already do that, because I know you work very hard to publicize that, but let's broaden it more than we're doing now.
Thank you, Laura. Any other comments?
No.
I think the program that Carmen mentioned, we usually get, what, $3,000 to $400,000 a year, is that right? And that helps Carmen to serve about 20 to 25 families or households, bring those homes that are in, you know, kind of neglected shape, up to the code standards, and I know of at least one case where they hitched onto a mobile home and pulled it out and put a brand-new one in place. So, they go all the way if they must. They do have a cap on how much they spend on per project, right, Carmen? Anything else you want to add, Carmen?
No, just that I'd like to also recognize all the other people in the town of Prescott Valley that adhere to the Fair Housing Act and that support this legislation.
Thank you. Anything else, Rick? Thank you so much, Carmen, keep up the good work. Now, we were both scheduled to have a certificate of appreciation to Christie Joan for 15 years of service. For some reason, I don't see her here.
She's not celebrating.
She what?
Postponed.
Postponed, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Okay, with that, we'll then go on to number eight, which is comments, communications. Council, any comments? Communications? None? Okay. Okay, there being no comments and communications, we'll go on to the matters listed on the consent agenda. These are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, unless discussion is desired on a specific item, that'll be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. That includes the approval of April 7, 2016 work study, and April 14, 2016 council meeting minutes, approving the professional service agreement with Gervasio, to pronounce it right, and associates for forensic engineering for the library, approving a special event liquor license for Eagle Management and Events LLC on behalf of the Prescott Trail Riders to sell alcoholic beverages during the Prescott Valley Grand Prix to be held on May 28 and May 29, 2016, approving the transfer of funds from information technology computer software account to the capital equipment account, approving the transfer of funds in the amount of $8,335 from the police department fiscal year 2015-16 operations management budget to the capital budget, and the department reports and the financial report. Anyone want to pull any item, or do you want to prove it as a whole?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda by electronic vote.
Okay, we have a...
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Okay, that, I guess it passed, I don't see any...
We don't have a screen. Unanimous, Mayor?
It did pass?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to number 10. By the way, there was two other items, I didn't read, the investment report and accounts payable, they were on that, too. Go on to number 10, second reading by title only, of ordinance number 815, Amendments to the Utility Regulations for Water and Sewer, Water and Wastewater Service. And with that, I would ask the town clerk to read ordinance number 815 by title only. Diane?
Ordinance number 815, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Amendments to Articles 9-05, 9-05A, and 9-05B of the Town Code, declared by Resolution 1960 to be a public record, to update the town's local limits for wastewater discharges and its backflow requirements for domestic water and fire protection systems, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code not herein amended shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provision in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provision shall not be affected but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Okay, is there any discussion anyone wants? If not, I would ask, shall the ordinance pass? Would you set the vote, Diane?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor, for yes vote.
Thank you, Diane, okay. Then we move on to a consideration of appointing Ron Culver as a citizen board member to the personnel board. Vice Mayor?
Yes. One position on the personnel board became open for the citizen board member position due to the resignation of Michael Flannery, effective at the term end on April 25, 2016. He was first appointed to the personnel board on June 28, 2012, to an existing term with an expiration date of April 25, 2014, and then reappointed to a second term with the expiration date of April 25, 2016. The Boards and Commissions Selection Committee invited Ron Culver, the current citizen alternate board member, to consider stepping into the citizen board member position. He accepted and submitted a signed letter of intent. Myself, councilmembers Laura Lee Nye and Mary Mallory are recommending the appointment of Ron Culver to fill the vacancy made by Michael Flannery's departure with the term renewal date of April 25, 2018.
Good, Laura, any comments?
How about a motion?
How about a motion? Mayor, any comments?
No, Mayor.
How about a motion?
Motion to appoint Ron Culver as a personnel board, citizen board member, to a term with a renewal date of April 25, 2018, by electronic and a voice vote.
And Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
That was a unanimous vote, Mayor.
It was, thank you.
Electronically.
Okay, we move on then to number B, consideration of reappointing Fernando Gonzalez as a non-exempt employee member to the personnel board, again. Vice Mayor?
Yes. On April 25, 2016, Fernando Gonzalez's term on the personnel board as the non-exempt employee member, excuse me, will come due for renewal. He submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Fernando Gonzalez was first appointed to a partial term as the non-exempt employee member on the personnel board September 26, 2013. This reappointment will be his third consecutive term. Myself, councilmembers Mary Mallory and Laura Lee Nye are recommending the reappointment of Fernando Gonzalez for a term with a renewal date of April 25, 2018.
Good. Any comments, Mary?
No. Mayor, I'd just like to make a motion to reappoint Fernando Gonzalez as a non-exempt employee member to the term with a renewal date of April 25, 2018, by electronic vote.
And I'll second that.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
Councilmember Nye?
I did, I did.
Thank you. That's unanimous electronically, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we move on to number C, consideration of appointing, reappointing Jeanne Lacane as a non-exempt alternate employee to personnel board, again, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I will. I want to take a moment, though, to thank councilmember Nye for being more prepared tonight than I was, because she has all the paperwork that I need to sound really intelligent.
Okay, you want...
I don't sound intelligent, but the paperwork's here, so I have the opportunity.
Okay.
On April 25, 2016, Jeanne Lacane's term on the personnel board as the non-exempt alternate employee member will come due for renewal. She submitted the renewal application letter choosing to be reappointed. Jeanne Lacane was first appointed to a partial term as the non-exempt alternate employee member on the personnel board March 12, 2014. This reappointment will be her second consecutive term. Myself, councilmembers Laura Lee Nye and Mary Mallory are recommending the reappointment of Jeanne Lacane for a term with a renewal date of April 25, 2018.
Thank you. Any comments, Laura?
No, we'll let Rick make the motion.
Rick will make the motion. Mary, any comments?
No, Mayor.
Yeah, you think we're ready for the motion?
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to appoint Jeanne Lacane as the non-exempt alternate employee member to a term with a renewal date of April 25, 2018, by electronic vote.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? Mine didn't come up, by the way.
Mine didn't either.
How is this possible?
We were on a roll there for a few minutes.
Mayor Scug?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
And councilmember Marshall voted electronically yes.
How does that work?
So, it's a unanimous vote for yes.
The Clinton likes Steven.
And that one is unanimous, thank you. We'll go on to D, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1958, approving FDP 16003, and to sign any agreement under Proposition 207. Real Bertos. Got any comments, Carmen?
Hello, Mayor and Council?
Okay, it still says town. For your consideration this evening, I have a request by Don Management for a final development plan for the development of a Mexican fast-food drive-through restaurant and associated parking. It's an approximate 2,100-square-foot building with associated parking and drive-through. It's in the Town and Country Shopping Center in front of the Just Brakes and adjacent to Chase Bank. This proposed development is in compliance with the Prescott Valley General Plan 2025 and all applicable town codes. The development will be for a Philiberto's Mexi... The development will be for a Philibertos Mexican restaurant, and I'm sure there's many people who are anxiously awaiting this restaurant to come. The requirements for commercial P A Ds under the town code have all been met, and therefore, staff recommends approval of this development. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions. The applicant is not here this evening.
Questions, anyone?
I just wanted to mention, this is where the convenience store closed about a year and a half ago.
Yes, that is correct.
So it's that empty, ugly building that used to be there.
It is, yes. They have razed the building and they'll be starting from scratch.
So it's bound to make the area look much better, thank you.
Yes.
Comment, Mary?
Yeah, I'm excited to see that we have some new business coming in. It's nice because we have a little bit of areas over there that have been closing down, so I'm thankful for this. It's good. Good for the community, good for the economy.
Good. Any other comments or question, Mike?
Yeah, I was just wondering, you mentioned Philibertos, and we see Rielbertos, which, what is it?
Oh, excuse me, it is Rielbertos.
Is it one and the same, one way or another, or not?
I know there are other Rielbertos, and that they are very popular. I think there's one in Flagstaff. I believe there's one in Prescott and some in the valley. Rielbertos is...
Rielbertos. They even have one in India. I went on their website today, they have one in India.
Thank you. We wouldn't have known if you had.
And thank you for catching that.
Well, no, we were discussing that, whether or not it's one and the same, so...
I get confused sometimes.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Motions, commotions, demotions, promotions?
I could try.
Mike?
I'm Marty.
Marty. It's not taken. Anyway, motion to authorize the mayor in his absence to the vice mayor to sign resolution number 1958, approving FDP 16-003 to sign any agreement under proposition 207 for Rielbertos by electronic vote.
I will attempt to second.
We have the motion and a second, can you set the vote, Diane?
I don't know.
For some reason, it slipped into another agenda.
Councilmember Mallory? Do you wish to vote?
Yes.
Is yours not working?
Mine is not working.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
That's unanimous, yes, Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, we move on to number E, consideration of awarding a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Earth Resources Corporation LLC, in an amount up to $61,204 for the Glassford Hill Summit Trail parking lot, CIP number P41.1, and approve an amendment to the town engineer agreement with Davin Associates in the amount of $12,150 Glassford Hill Trail. Norm?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. We did talk about this in work state in quite some detail, but just to give you some highlights for this particular project, this is the trailhead parking lot for the Glassford Summit Trail. Council may recall that over the last six months, the trail has been constructed up to the top. We were successful in getting the easement from the state land. So, once we got the easement and paid for that in the fall, we've moved forward with constructing in-house the trail up to the top. The trail is complete, and I understand getting some use and getting more popular, so the nice thing about this is very timely. Davin Associates did do the design. You met or saw Gordon earlier here tonight, so he's done a wonderful job on the design, make it economical for this particular parking lot. Just wanted to point out, funding source was from the NCU grant funding, so that's gone to fund not only this parking lot, but many of the amenities and the improvements for the summit trail up to the top. So that was the funding source. And what you have before you tonight is a contract award for $61,000, or $61,204 to local Earth Resources, a local contracting company, to construct the parking lot. We've discussed when they're looking forward to getting started right away and having this in place by the anticipated May 21 ribbon-cutting ceremony for the particular summit trail. One thing I did want to show you, this is the exhibit, as you can see where the parking lot's going to be located and the trail, I've shown this before, but as well as last week's meeting, the question everyone always asks is, how far is it and what's the elevation change? And we do have an exhibit, so since last week's meeting, we did add this, but to answer those questions, that same exhibit, this is easier to read, but you can see the trailhead parking lot noted there along Castle Drive. From that point, it would be 2.1 miles to the summit on top, and the elevation difference is 940 feet, which is getting more close to 1,000 feet than anything else. So that is the strict engineering of how far and the elevation difference, which if I read my exhibit right, the elevation at the bottom is, can I read it from here?
You can't read that.
I can't read that from here, even my glasses, so... 5183 at the bottom, yes, so doggone, and the summit? 6123, thank you, with the good eyesight behind me here, so...
Norm, why is that trail so crooked?
Well, that's what you got to do on those tough elevation changes. If we go back to the other one, this one has some of the contours, where you can see we're traversing quite a steep climb there, so that's why it's so crooked.
Norm, you missed an opportunity. You should have asked him, why did you make them so crooked? Because he made them.
Yeah, can't you go in a straight line? So, you know, actually, that's what's kind of funny, if you look at it, a section, as you can see, this is a state land section, you're basically traversing from one end to the other, it would be right at a mile. But as you see, in order to traverse that steep climb there, you add a full another mile to the distance from the trailhead, so that's the elevation, that's the difference. So, Council, that's our staff's recommendation, move forward to award construction. Had good bids from two local contractors, and we'd like to get started and put this parking lot in place.
I have a historical question, Mayor. And I know Mr. Tarkowski can answer it. I know that we've been trying to do this for at least 15 years. It's been a long time dream. Just how long have we dreamed to do this?
The actual application that Davin Associates put in was five years ago to Arizona State Land Department, and their process took that long to do the archaeological work, the historical work, the bugs, the bees, the dirt, the rocks, all of that. So it's been a while. But it did not take long once Davin Associates were able to shake loose the land. Then it moved rather quickly.
Mary, comment?
Yeah, once again, you know, this is another great asset to the community. If you look at everything that's come up to the council this evening, it's all about the community, it's all about the people. It's all about the people that live here and how we work together. And without each other, all of this would probably not be possible. So we do a good job here, we all do. So I really appreciate this community, I love this town. Thank you, Norm.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd be remiss, just wanted to add, if I could, real quick, you know, a lot of the focus has been on the trail, that's the exciting part, the long-awaited trail and build to the top, but, you know, keep in mind, part of this application, too, was you see the the water tank that is, you know, very prominent on halfway through. That was a, you know, lease that had to be renewed every 10 years, so we've got a permanent lease on it, so I know, commenting on Neil's behalf, that that's a lot of it, too. So it's got a lot of other particular advantages with, you know, future expansions and multi-use paths we talked about. In addition to the immediate need that that existing water tank is now in all perpetuity, and that does serve the town, so that's, that's good for the water rate payers, that it's our water system, so there was a couple of things rolled up in the application, but part of the most, you know, visible is the new trail, that's very exciting.
We have a lady in the audience who would have a comment. Come on up and introduce yourself. Thank you for coming, it's good to see you.
Hey, I've never done this before, so I'm very nervous.
You're going to pull the microphone down just a little, there you go. It doesn't stay, I'll have to...
My name is Darcy Padilla. I happen to live on Castle Drive exactly across from where this parking lot is going to go. Now, we moved to Prescott from Tucson back in January of 77, my husband and I. We lived in Prescott for six years because we unable to afford a house in Prescott, we came to Prescott Valley. We looked at lots of lots, and we found this empty lot on Castle Drive. We went to planning and zoning and asked about it. It met all the requirements of VA loan that we were wanting to get to build. And we were told, I asked, is anything going to happen out there on the other side of this fence? We were told at that time that there was a 99-year lease on that property and that we would never see anything happen there in our lifetime. That was a deciding factor for us to buy this property and build our home that we were going to, we planned to live in until we die. We raised our children there. They got to feed the horses and the cows and the antelope that came to the fence every morning. And this is a piece of their history and their memories that you guys are tearing away from us because my house is right there across from this parking lot you're going to put in there. We were really upset when the canal came in and we didn't understand that the canal was coming in there. By doing so, the antelope can no longer come, the cows can no longer come to our children, not just our children. We are fairly close on that street. Once the canal went in, most people started renting their homes out, moved out. There are still a handful of us that have been there for many years. And the road to the canal has been I know it's been good for the town, but it's been horrible for us. We get very little police involvement in our area, especially on our streets since we were on the fence line. And it has turned into a trail for everybody from construction workers to have cut-throughs to people on segways, golf carts, trucks, Volkswagen Beagles, just about anything that runs on the road runs on that road there that goes along the canal. All the ATVs, quads, motorcycles of every kind are on there all the time, buzzing up and down, tearing up the land, causing dust. And we have called, I would say, hundreds of times. And by the time somebody comes from the police department, they're gone and nothing is addressed. There should have been signage, I've requested signage through the police department, they've asked me what I would suggest, and I said signage, that there's no motorized vehicles allowed here. I've requested for the fence to be repaired many, many times. Somebody broke through the gates, and they were never replaced. And so this has been a really hard thing for us to have to swallow. And then, two days ago, we got this on our doorstep notifying us that in just a few days, which is actually the next day, the property was being staked out for this parking lot. Now, our street is a one-lane street, we enjoy it being a one-lane street because people can't speed as slow. A lot of people try to use it as a cut-through to get to the Home Depot now, but because it is narrow enough, they cannot speed the way they do on Prescott East. So this is where our kids could play in the street, when the grandkids come, they could play in the street. We thought this is where it was going to be for the rest of our lives. And it has been totally taken away from us. My husband is very distressed about this. He's an ill man, he doesn't look it, but he is, he is very ill. And this this is going to have a great effect on his, him physically. And it has had a great effect on me, just emotionally, that this was just thrown to us. Guess what? We're going to widen your road, we're going to throw a parking lot in front of your face, and now you won't get to see anything but all these people. They come and they party, and they will drink unless you're on it constantly calling. And if you're going to put a parking lot in there, how much worse is it going to be? Are you going to put lights in? We won't see our stars anymore? I mean, there was all reasons why we moved there, why we chose that place, because there's no streetlights, the stars are so bright there, you feel like you could reach up and touch them. And with all this added traffic, the kids cannot play in the road anymore. You just completely changed our lives by doing this. And it's extremely disturbing. And the notice was so late on this, hardly anybody would have the opportunity to call and protest, I guess that's what I'm trying to do, is protest this, because you just don't know what you're doing to us, and we feel like you're slapping us in the face. And it feels like you've taken us back to when you forced us to become part of the city so that, so that we could hook onto your sewer system. We were put between a rock and a hard place, and you had to become part of the city, or you have no choice. This is not your choice, you have to. Because we will not allow you to rebuild your sewer system that you have there. We will not allow it, so you have to become part of the city. And so you shove that down our throats, and now now you're taking away this one thing that we had left, that we weren't going to have anything out there. We were going to have that at least, and now you're taking that away from us, too. And we are the red-headed, ugly stepchild of Prescott Valley, we are, we know it. And this tells us exactly where we stand with you, because no consideration was given to any of us.
Thank you, Darcy, we appreciate your comments. Larry, you have anything to add to that? The only thing I would ask is that council or staff try to work with the so that it minimizes the disturbance to the residents.
We can go ahead and certainly assure you that we have no intention of lighting that parking lot. So your concern about the dark sky is...
You know what, if you'd use the microphone...
Are you going to monitor it, or have it fenced and gated like many parks, so that they cannot come in and park and party there at night?
Well, there's actually, part of the plan is to have a berm installed that will act as a buffer in between the homes and the actual parking lot. That's part of the design that we have on that.
So we don't get to see the antelope unless they're halfway up the mountain now? Thank you so much.
Darcy, thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Motions, demotions? Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to award a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Earth Resources Corporation LLC, in the amount of up to $61,204 for the Glassford Hills Summit Trail parking lot, CIP number P41.1, and approve an amendment to the town engineer agreement with Davin Associates in the amount of $12,150.
Second, anyone?
I'll take the motion.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane?
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
That is unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to number F. Consideration of awarding the mowing service contract for the fiscal year 2016-17 to swept away LLC doing business as Triton Enterprises LLC for a contract amount not to exceed $39,419.04. Norm?
Yes, Mayor, Council. The item we have before you tonight is one of our annual contracts for mowing services. Council may be aware that we've contracted in the past for mowing services to help augment our crews. We do have three mowers on inventory that we do mow some of the residential streets, but we use outsourced services in a competitive arena in order to mow Highway 69 and some of the larger areas, to include Highway 69, the viewpoint drainage, and also the lakeshore drainage. So you see, this is one of our town mowers that's working, so this gives you an indication of what the particular mowing services do along the right of way. And this particular contract was competitively bid. Council may recall, this is one of our annual contracts, we'll come to you in May with some of our renewable contracts, but last year, the particular contractor we had wanted to more of an increase in what we could work within the contract, so we talked last week, we rebid it, sent it out to, thought we'd get lots of interest, didn't. Called every landscaping contractor we knew and told them we're bidding it again, and we ended up with, you know, three competitive bids, which we're happy with. we ended up with, you know, three competitive bids, which we're happy with. You can see Swept Away, who's actually our current roadway sweeping contractor, they're also going to provide mowing services in order to meet the contract obligations. So they're ready to do the work, and they, with upon council award tonight, they can get started and provide mowing services in those right-of-way that I mentioned. So one of the annual bid contractors have the opportunity, like all annual contracts, up to five-year, one-year renewals, but this is a new contract renewal and new vendor. But we've got a lot of confidence. Councilman Grossman brought up last week, while it seems like their bid was a good one, I said, yes, it was. We've been in contact with them, they're very confident do the work as they do the work for our sweeping contracts. So they've told us they can do the work for their price, so we look forward to engaging them to do this particular mowing work with award of a contract. At that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, anyone? We did discuss this in the work study too, quite a bit. Anyone questions? No questions?
You want a motion?
Yeah, we're ready for that, if that's... everyone's satisfied with the information.
Motion to award the contract mowing services for fiscal year 2016-2017 to Swept Away LLC, DBA, Tyrone Enterprises LLC, for the contract amount not to exceed $39,419, and don't forget the four cents. Buy electric and voice board if it's required.
Second, anyone?
Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Again, will you set the vote?
Vice Mayor, how do you wish to vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman, how do you wish to vote? Thank you. That is unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Okay. Norm, good job. We'll go on to G. Public hearing, alternative expenditure limitation home rule. Where's Bill? I got any comments, or Larry?
Mayor and council, two weeks ago, you heard from Bill on expenditure limitations. You have the data in front of you, and this is the second reading or the public hearing, excuse me, for that. And so unless you want Bill to get, come up and redo his presentation of two weeks ago, then you could open the public hearing if you chose.
Certainly. I've studied this. Anyone from the public here to comment or question? Everybody understands the home rule requirement?
Mayor?
Yeah, Laura?
I would just urge all of the citizens to understand this so that when you go to vote, you'll be fully informed on the dire consequences for our community if it's not approved.
They're putting it... Excuse me. You're putting it in a nutshell. Should the town of Prescott Valley and its citizens be bound by a formula that was put together in 1980, when this community had 1,000 people? And that's essentially what this is about. Do you want the state to decide what level of services you provide, or should the citizens of the town of Prescott Valley decide through their elected officials what the level of service should be that is consistent with a community that is roughly 43,000 to 44,000 people?
I think that the town has done a better job of managing our funds than the state has of doing their own fiscal management, certainly better than our federal government. So I would hope that people will continue to vote for a home rule option. That means letting the town manage it. Any other, any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Mike?
Yeah, I just want to mention, as we talked about this before, very few, if any, communities out there in Arizona, they do go through this process, because it's pretty much giving us local control over our budget and what we plan to do in terms of today and in the future relative to the town. And it encompasses a lot of different aspects. If you look at our 2025 plan, that's kind of our blueprint for the future. And as we go through our budget process next couple of weeks, those are things that we know intimately as opposed to the state. And it's hard to, you know, I don't understand why this was originally put in place, but it gives us an opportunity to restate that we like local control. We would prefer not to have the state tell us how to budget and how much and what we can do with that. So it's pretty straightforward, I think, and I think there's information out there that'll give you a little background as far as what the home rule is. And again, we've done it for many years, and as you've heard, we hope that the community will, again, vote and help us create a community with the budget we've outlined and the plans we have in the future.
Thank you, Mike. Any other comments, questions?
I also want to make sure that our residents understand it's an archaic law that nobody ever went through. You know, every community has them, every state has them. The other piece of this is they don't even have current data. The data this is based on is, like was said prior, 1980. And so that these are the facts we hope you'll all share with your neighbors, and when you go down to the donut hole, talk about it, inform people. It's important they understand.
Any other comments? Any else from the public here to comment? Do you have any questions also? Yes, come on up. You'll have to use the microphone.
In regard to this, I have no comment.
Okay, without the microphone, it doesn't go over at the TV. Oh, you're waiting for the call? Okay, if there is no further, anyone care to make a... Well, we don't have a motion. If there is no further discussion, then I would declare the public hearing closed, and we'll move on to comments from the public, unscheduled comments. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not to anyone thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. You're up. Come on up. It's good to see you. I appreciate your coming.
My name is Glenn Gustafson. I reside at 7636 East Los Flores Avenue here in Prescott Valley. I appreciate the opportunity to address you council members, Mayor Skoug, Town Manager Takowski, and also Public Works Manager Norm Davis. I have a compliment for Mr. Davis inasmuch as he is responsive to people stopping by his office and asking questions. And those questions were in regard to the monumental sign that's been erected out here at the corner of Lakeview and...
Civic Center.
Lake Shore and Lakeview and...
Civic Center.
Yeah. The monument out on the corner. I went to Norm Davis's office when I noticed the sign was being, or the thing was being erected, and my question was, were... was the city aware of the situation that has been created by that creation of that monument sign? When you go to get on Lake Shore from Lakeview, there is very, very limited visibility to the left, to oncoming traffic from your left on Lake Shore. There is a right turn lane associated with that intersection there on Lakeview. When you are waiting to turn left onto Lake Shore, if another driver comes to the intersection to turn right, they are forced to creep into the intersection even further than you have crept into the intersection illegally to see oncoming traffic. When that right turn traffic there encroaches into the intersection, they block your view of cross traffic on Lake Shore. What we have done, ladies and gentlemen, is we've created a monster. Someone is going to be injured in a severe accident at that intersection. There is no doubt in my mind about that. Number one, traffic on Lake Shore does not proceed at the posted limit. I see only one means of alleviating that situation, and that is to erect stop signs for either direction on Lake Shore. I know that at one time, it was entertained that we would put a traffic circle there. Oh, please don't bless us with a traffic circle. Please. They do not manage traffic. They interfere more than anything with the general flow of traffic. All you have to do is go to Sedona from either way, and you'll encounter seven of them. They are not pedestrian-friendly, and even though we lack many sidewalks in this community that could be there, maybe someday they will be, we're not going to see sidewalks immediately, and it's no magic thing. I know that. However, you know, I hope that you will consider my suggestion of posting stop signs for traffic on Lake Shore, because it is unmanageable right now. And as I say, it's an accident waiting for a place to happen. Now, I have one other comment, and that is, how do we get potholes fixed in our side streets? Because Los Flores has several, and they should be fixed before they become major tank traps. So with that, I appreciate the ability to address the council and you, Mr. Mayor, and Larry, and Norm, and everybody. And I have a special relationship with Norm, but he'll have to explain that to you.
Mr. Gustafson, we sure appreciate that. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, sir.
And keep in mind, we appreciate your comments, so always feel free.
Well, I don't know who added the little Prescott Valley logo signs to that monument, but we could have done without that, too.
Okay. Well, thank you.
They're kind of cheesy.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If there be no further comment, then I'm going to, we'll move on to agenda item number 13, which I know everyone hates, and that's adjournment. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. A second, anyone?
A second.
We have a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
Okay.
Mine isn't coming up.
Neither is mine.
Mayor Skoug?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous, Mayor.
That passes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. It was good to see you.